Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 19th, 2022 Cumberland County Commissioners Board Meeting. At this time, if we could please take a moment of silence in honor of Cumberland County Deputy Oscar Bolanos Anavista, please. Thank you. At this time, I would... How about now, we're good?
Yeah.
It's still not, so they'll work on it.
Y'all, mine's on, so that's...
Mic check? Okay, we're good. Thank you so much. At this time, I will do our invocation as well as our pledge. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy, your kindness. We thank you, God, for another opportunity to come together to do the work of the people. I pray, God, that you will grant every commissioner the wisdom and guidance and clarity needed to perform the business. And I pray, God, for each and every citizen that has come out here tonight to show interest, God, in the things that concern them, God. But even those that are not here, we pray for them. We pray for all of those who are mourning at this time. We lift up our sheriff office to you tonight, God, and pray that you will comfort them as well as the family of all those that grieve. We thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to deviate a little bit from the agenda and go down to the swearing-in of our deputy clerk. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, the clerk, Ms. Andrea Tebby. And I would like to recognize District Court Judge Tiffany Whitfield, who would administer the oath of office to the clerk of the board.
Tiffany, get to the mic and hold the mic back so you can do it right there.
Well, go this way. And as they're coming forward, do you want to introduce who will be holding the Bible for you this evening?
This is my husband, Donald Tebby, and my son, Grant Tebby.
If you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand for me, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andrea Tebby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The constitutions and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
I will fully discharge.
I will fully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As clerk of the Cumberland County.
As clerk of the Cumberland County.
Board of Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
I can't see.
Okay.
I can't see. Wait a minute. I can't see.
Don't go down.
I like that.
You just hurt Dad's feelings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Whitfield. Thank you, Ms. Tebby. Congratulations. You have been doing a phenomenal job, and we wanted you to be legit when you start taking notes tonight. So that's why I deviated from that. Now, we will move on. We're going to ask Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council members to step up to the podium, please. Introduce yourselves and tell what school you go to.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Charleston, and I'm a sophomore at Cumberland International Early College High School, and I am a member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
Hello, Jonathan.
Good evening. My name is Zen Woods. I am a senior at the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics in Durham, and I am also a member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
Thank you. Go ahead.
With the new year rapidly approaching, we are pleased to report to you all about the projects and events FCYC has been a part of lately. When we last spoke with you all in November, we shared our excitement to watch our annual jingle tree and adoptive team projects. Our award-winning jingle tree, where our community donated different items, jingles, to our jingle tree for us to give to teenage foster children in Cumberland County. And we are happy to report that we have received nearly 50 jingles from the public. Due to their generosity, we will be able to provide Christmas to our peers. We are thankful for our community's support of these projects.
Just as FCYC is working to improve our generation, we are also working to strengthen our leadership skills. This past month, we have hosted two major workshops made available to all of our members. Former Chair and FCYC alumna Rebecca Mitchell led a discussion on public speaking. In this session, members learned the key to being a great public speaker and even practiced an elevator pitch to best represent FCYC. Our current Chair, Raimi Mack, made a presentation on how to properly practice civil discourse in our community. Our members enjoyed learning how to handle crisis situations and object to social injustice in a nonviolent manner. FCYC is proud to say we produce well-rounded leaders.
Thank you for your continuous support of Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and we thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. We have some presentation for you. Just stand right there. It says, "Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Jonathan Charleston and Zen Woods for Outstanding Service as a Voice for Youth in Cumberland County Community and for Focusing on the Betterment and Promotion of Our Community from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners dated this 19th day of December 2022." Thank you so much.
Get on the other side of her, baby. Get the judge in. Okay, that's good.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You both are amazing speakers.
Thank you.
And that stood out. County Manager, I will call on you now to present the Ewing Coal Project Architect Design Firm.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Earlier this evening, the Crown Event Committee, Event Center Committee, met to discuss several items, one of which was moving...
Excuse me, I'm not going... Madam Manager, I think they can't hear. Everybody's got an ear up, so you may want to use that right there. I see him...
Okay. Sorry. Earlier this evening, the Crown Event Center Committee met to discuss several items, one of which was meeting our new architectural team from Ewing Coal. I will turn it over to Jermaine Walker, our Director of Engineering and Infrastructure, to briefly introduce the team from Ewing Coal.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Madam Chairwoman, to the board. Like to introduce to you very quickly the Ewing Coal Project Design Team. Here, we have Mr. Ryan Likewise. He is the project designer. We have Ms. Shannon Noon. She is the interior designer. We have Mr. George Bussie, who is the programmer planner. And then we have Mr. Joel Dobrowski, who will be the senior designer specializing in building envelope. And so they're excited to be here. We're excited to have them, and I just wanted to introduce them to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. And now I will call on Vice Chairman Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Alex Guthright, if you come up, please. You can come on over, too. Everybody knows I'm all about celebration, so come on up here and take his picture and get mine, too, while you're at it. You know, this is, it's always an honor and a pleasure for me to recognize people who are doing things and are citizens in our community. And Alex is no different. I'll tell you what, I don't know that I did all the things that Alex did. He's a Presidential Volunteer Award that he received. So Alex attended the Cape Fear Community Emergency Response Team Training. During the training, participants learn about disaster preparedness, disaster psychology, terrorism, disaster medical training for emergency situations, what to do for broken bones, how to treat a patient in shock, and CPR, and fire safety. The Police Department and Sheriff's Department teach about human trafficking and gangs, depression, bullying. And then after training, the participants have an opportunity to join a cert team in helping the community. Alex joined in June and has volunteered 100 hours since then. He is receiving the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. Y'all should clap for that, 100 hours? And this is the President's Volunteer Service Award. The President's Volunteer Service Award is presented to Alex Guthright Gold by AmeriCorps in Recognition and Appreciation for your commitment to strengthen our nation and communities through volunteer services, awarded this 2022, and it has points of life and American cor. Congratulations. Hold on a minute, let me take my glasses off. We gotta do this, Mike. All right, now we turn this way. Now we turn that way.
Well done. Congratulations.
We will now move on to our public comment section or public comment period. Madam Manager.
The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute time limit is reached. No time may be yielded from one speaker to another. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order that their names appear on the sign-up sheet and will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Any action on items brought up during the comment period will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and written comments or other supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have seven speakers. The first speaker is CB Morrison.
Because of the number of speakers that we have, we will allow speakers to speak for two minutes so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. And so we will speak, the speakers will have two minutes. Thank you.
Yes, it'll turn blue and read. Hold the mic till you know. Yeah, there you go. Evening, Commissioners. My name is Clarence Morrison. I'm a Cumberland County resident and native. My grandfather was captain of Police Department here in Fayetteville, also the first officer-friendly for the Cumberland County School System Officers, Officer-friendly program in the '70s. I recently met with a group of citizens in Cumberland County trying to end the homeless problem here in Cumberland County. A lot of ideas get rambled around in those meetings. Basically, it's a search for answers and who to be put in contact with to end this blight on our community. Myself being in that meeting represented the experience of housing over 25,000 homeless people as recently as 2019 in Oakland, California. The same thing can be accomplished here in Fayetteville. I understand the fundings that are available for a 501(c)(3), but a group of citizens doesn't have a 501(c)(3) to work through. I, myself, can have already met with several homeless camps here in Fayetteville, and I'm asking that the Cumberland County suspend the $500 fine against already indigent homeless people to put them in a bleaker state or more of a meager state than they're already in. All they do is want is help. And I'm willing to stand in the gap and end homelessness in Cumberland County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Rhonda Shirley.
Rhonda Shirley?
Our next speaker is Kathy Greggs.
She's coming.
Okay. I'm sorry, the name again?
Kathy Greggs.
Okay, continue.
Carla Ikaza.
Matthew Jones.
Can we go back three minutes?
Well, unfortunately, we can't because I did not allow the...
Congrats, Tony and Veronica. I remember meeting you out at the pole place, so congratulations. Again, another thing on the, I need to state my name, I'm sorry, Matthew Jones, 887 Flintwood Road. So another thing on the homelessness, and I know, Jimmy, I know you don't like people hanging out at the library. She says it scares the kids. I take my kids there, so no problem there. I would actually hate to be judged just by the basis of not having a home. I would hate the fact of being judged by just not having a home. So, Tony, I know you led us with prayer, and I appreciate that. Christmas is right around the corner. I think, I know, I don't even know your name, to be honest, but I know the attorneys put this thing forward about not letting people on county property. You know, homelessness encampments on county property. Well, if they can't be on city property, can't be on county property, are y'all inviting them over for a sleepover? I mean, because where are they supposed to, where are they supposed to stay? It would be different if we had this big old, you know, shelter where we could offer them a place to stay, but we don't, and y'all know that we don't. So, again, 2 Corinthians 5:10, "For we must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ, so that each of us may receive what is due us for the things we have done while in the body, whether good or bad." Proverbs 14:31, "Whoever oppresses a poor man insults his maker, but he who is generous to the needy honors him." These are things that you have to keep close to yourselves, because if we're claiming to be by the book, praying, doing all that stuff, Jesus himself was homeless. So are we going to turn our back on the homeless? I mean, even last time I spoke here in November, October, whenever it was, we just want to waste the officers' time? Because, again, like you mentioned, Michael, like, you don't want to vote on that if they can't even do anything about it, and, Tony, you voted against it. So these are things that we need to bring into us. It's Christmas, so think about Jesus. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Sharman Tober.
Yes. My name is Sharman Armento Tober. My father was a resident of Cumberland County. After he got out of the military, we moved off base. And as I've been here for many years and circumstances beyond my control sent me homeless about 10 years ago. And I've lived also on the library at times. I've lived in front of the library at times. I've been on television. And like I said, recently, the city gave us citations because we were in front of the library on their property. My son got three, another guy got three, and I got one. We went to court a couple of weeks ago, and we, it was my first one, and one of my first, my son, he was, and the other guys was dismissed, too. They put Cumberland County, oh, anyway, I forgot. There's somebody over here that's helping us out right now. We're in a hotel, and we're working on a house, but it's not ready yet, and it's been, we've been in there almost, almost five weeks. But what I came to say, there is, there are sources that we can go to instead of giving these people fines. Like I said, they don't have anything, you know, they don't have anything. A lot of them are out here because they have drugs, alcohol abuse, or they have mental problems, or they're just down on their luck, like me and my son were, you know, even though I had five dogs, I still do. But like I said, it's circumstances sometimes that can't be helped, and you know, for the, you know, for, like I said, God was homeless, too. And like I said, when you pass on from this world, he's going to ask you, "What have you done for him?" And if you haven't done anything for him, you will not be going to where you want to be going. We all want to go to Pearly Gates, but we're not going to go there if we're not helping out the least of our brothers, and that includes the homeless. And they are down here, too, and we've got to love one another as we love ourselves, like God says, you know? But anyways, what I'm trying to get at is that we've got to... Peace be with you this time of season.
Thank you, Ms. Tober.
Sean McMillan.
Sean McMillan, 6224 Golden Rain Drive. Good evening. I'm here tonight to urge the board to vote no on proposals to criminalize poverty. I'm here to urge you to reject the no camping ordinance that you'll vote on later tonight. I ask that you vote on the shared values that you touted when you asked for our votes. The city of Fayetteville created a problem when it made being unhoused illegal, then tried to point fingers at the county as if this was a resource issue. No. The issue was a public policy blunder that they created with little thought and even less concern for the people affected. The recent past has taught us that any interaction with armed law enforcement presents the potential for police homicide and loss of life. As a community, we know the human cost of these interactions after losing Jada Johnson, Justin Lifcy, Joshua Oxendine, Jason Walker, Najee Hagens, Lawrence Graham, Travis Smotherman, Shakir McNair, Kevin Grissette, and Adrian Roberts. If this ordinance is passed, what will the Board of Commissioners do when someone is hurt during enforcement of a no camping ordinance? Are you willing to unnecessarily put someone in danger of losing their life just because they had the need to sleep in their car? On its face, the proposal is just inhumane. It suggests that we would rather lock someone in a cage than assist in finding them sustainable shelter. It suggests that we would choose to make a person who is trying to survive into a criminal rather than giving them the resources they so desperately need. Criminalizing the unhoused is among the most pitiful forms of municipal public policy. It is the lazy legislators' answer to a crisis that begs for thoughtfulness, patience, and compassion. I urge you again to vote no on this ordinance. Please avoid creating a problem that further exacerbates the existing problem, a problem that would require much less forcefulness and much more heartfulness.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, there are no more speakers, so we will move on to the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, there is one change. The developer has asked that Item 3(c), which is zoning case 220043, be postponed until January 17th for the public hearing. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of zoning case number 220043?
Are you just pulling it for now?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, as opposed to, I think it's up to the board as to whether they grant that postponement. And I think you, we may want to at least address those who came out and were in a position to speak about it, whether we're going to do it or not. I think that was their request, but I think the board needs to actually take some action on that. Excuse me, ma'am, please don't speak out.
Are there any speakers, Madam Chair, for case number 220043?
We have three speakers in opposition.
Okay, we will give them an opportunity to speak.
Well, I don't know if you want to do that. I just think that in order to postpone it, we have to have a vote. And I don't know if they want to come back and speak if we do postpone it or not. So I guess the first thing is whether we're going to postpone it or not. If not, it'll be heard, and then everybody gets to be able to speak, whether there's anybody for it or against it. If we decide to postpone it, I think then you can ask them, or you can make the decision whether they want to speak tonight or speak the next go-round. I just want to make sure that they are fairly heard on that.
So do we want to make a motion to postpone it or not? Is there a motion to postpone it?
It'd be a motion to approve their request for deferral.
Right. If I can get a motion to approve their deferral.
I move that we approve the request for deferral.
Second.
I got, I just have one question, though. Madam Manager, did they tell you why they want to postpone it? I mean, it's one thing just to request, but did they give you any indication of why?
They did not tell me. Well, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of deferring it? Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Chairwoman Stewart, Commissioner Booth, Commissioner Keith.
All those oppose?
Commissioner Jones, Vice Chairman Adams.
Now, what I do want to do is I do want to give them an opportunity, those who came out, it will be deferred, but for those who came out to speak, I do want to give them the opportunity to be heard at this time so that they will not have to come back next time. Is that... The option to come back. Attorney?
That would be certainly fine, Madam Chair, but you would probably want to do that at the time the case is presented, not right now, because there's nothing been presented about the case this time.
So they don't have an opportunity to be heard?
At the time of the cases, when you get to the, well, if you want them just to be able to speak without anybody putting anything else on it, that would be okay. I mean, if you want to do it that way, it would be okay. It's just they don't really know what's going to be... It's just they don't really know what's gonna be presented.
The, the three, the speakers who are here, in opposition, if you could, would you all like the opportunity to come back and be heard when it's presented before you, or would you like to speak now?
We have Robin Bridges, Wayne Bullock, and Donna Wilson.
I think, speaking for myself...
If you could stand up, please?
And come to the podium.
And come to the podium, and just let us know if you wanna be heard or not tonight.
Speaking for myself, I, we usually speak, and it's customary to speak after the presentation by the proponent. And I, I'm just very disheartened because this is the third postponement. This was the seventh time I've come and observed about this petition for zoning.
I understand. Okay, so you will come back when it's presented?
I, you'd have to ask the other individuals.
Well, I mean, you, are you?
Yes, I will definitely be back.
The other two that are opposed?
Yes, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. And there's another?
I won't speak now.
Well, you have that right. You have...
'Cause I'm kinda getting excited about this.
Wait a minute, you gotta...
Y'all will.
Okay, okay.
Ask them to wait till the case is called.
Okay, when we get ready to call the case, then we will call you up.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. With that exception?
With that exception. Well, we're probably gonna postpone it, but yes. And let him speak, yes.
Okay. It's been all those in favor of the agenda?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And now we will move on to our public comment?
No, to consent agenda.
To the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
And Madam Chair, I would suggest that item D be pulled from that consent agenda and voted on separately, so that you could vote on that matter separately, not vote on that matter separately.
Say that, yes.
I'm sorry. I would, I would suggest that item D, the capacity funding to Truvine Ministries, be pulled from the consent agenda.
Well, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just making sure that...
Okay.
What she asked.
Okay, well, then move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I would ask to remove item 2D and H4.
Okay, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of 2D and H4? Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second. I second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
2D, Madam Man, I mean, Madam Chairwoman, I did that because as we read the agenda setting conference, I don't know why it came on, well, I guess it was unanimous at the consent agenda, but you recused yourself from that vote. And I think before we vote on it, you may want to, to do that as you a member of Truvine and part of that. So that's why I pulled it and not do it on the consent agenda, so that you could put that into the minutes.
And I will recuse myself from the vote?
All right. So as to consent agenda, item number 2D, which was the approval of the request to allocate freed-up funding for the White Flag for Truvine Ministries to support the White Flag event, and Budget Ordinance Amendment B 230175, if I can get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Five, five to zero.
Just call out the names, and she recused herself.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
And we had one recusal.
And one recusal by Chairwoman Stewart.
Okay, and H4, we're just pulling that?
Well, I just wanted to ask, because I was confused. I saw what was in the agenda item, but I thought on the, in the agenda setting was that you were gonna go back, that the attorney was gonna go back and talk about squaring this up and all of that. And so this seems to approve, it doesn't really say that. So I thought you were gonna bring that back to the board as to whether Piedmont agreed to that or not agree to that for us to be able to vote on it.
I thought I made it clear that the last sentence is that the PNG had responded to the county attorney and is willing to proceed in this manner. And by this manner, I meant what I described. I didn't bring this, it's not ready for final form yet because there has to be surveying done and stuff. But PNG is willing to accept the property just behind the PWC lot or city lot, and just the amount of property they need. So it will be like a little dog leg still left back there, and that will square up the parcel. And I had also recommended, and the board had agreed, that we would, the county itself would further subdivide that triangular-shaped parcel split by the 170-foot easements and add, recombine that with the 33-acre parcel and remove it from the 159-acre parcel, because I think it makes the 33-acre parcel much more valuable.
So who has the easement? That's what I don't, I'm trying to figure out, when you're talking about squaring up, taking out all the easements?
It hasn't been surveyed yet. They've changed everything, and they're willing to proceed in the way that I've recommended, and the board accepted. But this is not final. This is just, it said the matter will be brought, final documents will be brought back for board approval when the process is complete. When I brought it to you before, PNG had not agreed to change their request. They have now agreed to that, but we have got to get surveys done.
So why don't we wait for the surveys instead of approving this tonight? Seems to me I would wanna see all of that and the contracts and everything else, and it is done, because once we vote on this and say it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. And then if you come back and the survey and all of that's not right, then I think we have some issues. So I would say that we wait and we pull this item until we get, you are able to just get them a signature on the line and make sure that these documents are proper.
What I, what I intended for you to approve was that the process with the final documents be brought back for the board approval when the process is complete. And that was what was, that's, that's what, best find is to pull it, as long as everybody knows.
Commissioner Keith.
Commissioner Adams pretty much laid it out. I mean, this is not what we really discussed, because you had an alternate plan for this to happen, and I thought that was the path we were going on, and I was reluctant to pass something that really wasn't what we talked about. So yes, Commissioner Adams, I agree with.
So I would ask to pull this, and when it's proper with all the documents that is brought back, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, we will now move on to our public hearing. Madam Manager, if you would introduce the next presenter?
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who's speaking on the, signed up to speak on the economic development matters? We do not. Do I need to give an introduction on that, or just introduce Mr. Moorefield and Mr. Van Gheens to present?
Go ahead and introduce them.
We can just do the presentation, and then you would call and close the public hearing if no one speaks, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, County Attorney, County Clerk. Thank you for this opportunity. You have received information on this twice, so I will be as brief as possible here, sir.
Can you do us a favor, because there's a lot of people watching, they don't know who you are. We know who you are.
Thank you.
But if you introduce yourself, where you from, just, and favorite economical...
Absolutely. Trying to be expeditious, and I cut a little too close to the bone there. Robert Van Gheens, President and CEO of the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Originally, we came to you with a request that was advertised as required to provide funds to, directly to the Community Development Foundation, which is our 501(c) nonprofit. The intent of the project is an economic equity venture capital fund that would be utilized to invest in 10 small minority-owned businesses to help them grow by 10 employees each and become government contractors providing local goods and services. That is the intent of this initiative. That is the purpose of the CDF, working through with your staff and speaking with the county attorney. It looks as if there are different ways that we can structure this participation from the county. But ultimately, the goal is that your participation in this project, be it through FCEDC or through the CDF, would provide a match towards a $2.5 million appropriation from the state of North Carolina. As you can, you will see in your packet from the county attorney, the proposal has evolved from our initial request as advertised. The terms here put forth that would be agreeable to the EDC, which has proactively taken a motion to adopt and proceed under such guidance, would be that the funds would go to the FCEDC, that we would provide services to help these companies grow, working with community partners such as Seed, The Hub at FSU, SBTDC, and that we would work with companies that had fewer than 50 employees to create 100 new full-time jobs in Cumberland County within five years. We may withdraw under these terms $12,500 per job for each of the jobs created. If the job is not maintained, importantly, then we would be obligated to repay $12,500 back per job not maintained, and we would repay any funds that were unspent back to the county. I'm happy to go into greater detail, happy to answer questions, but I do know you've got a roomful of folks here behind me. And I turn it over, ask Tony Moorefield if I missed anything there in the reading from the agenda packet.
Let me ask one question, though. Madam Chairwoman.
Commissioner Adams?
I don't understand, what I really don't understand on this is, FCEDC may use and withdraw the $12,500 for each job created, up to 100 jobs. If they don't pay that, if the new job's not maintained, FCEDC shall repay $12,500 to the county? And then you say you're gonna pay, if FEEDC fails to repay any funds, the county shall withhold those funds from any other county funds appropriated to FEEDC? I'm paying myself. That doesn't make sense. I appropriate money to FEEDC for economic development, and you're telling me if you don't give it back to me, I just withhold funds that I'm giving to you for economic development? I'm just paying myself back. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand that language. That makes no sense to me. I'm basically, we appropriate that money, you tell me instead of appropriating, I just keep it, which is my money already. So they're not paying me back for those, that $12,500.
Because that $12,500 is gone.
Well, it's gone, but you're asking me now to pay it, to withhold funds that I'm giving them for economic development for this whole county. So in essence, I'm paying myself back. I lost $12,500, and then I'm paying myself back $12,500. Doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't compute.
And I'm still concerned, I thought that Mr. Van Gheens is on board with the fact that we cannot, our money cannot be used to make loans or grants, and...
I'm very much in agreement with that, very much in agreement with that throughout.
So, but what you said was it was gonna, you were gonna be loaning the money to businesses, just not our money, just not the county money?
There are portions of this project, the state funds, that will be utilized, you know, differently than. Here, it would be, I guess, Vice Chair Adams, it would be a reduction in your future expenses. So you'd be, you would not be paying, you would not be continuing to maintain the same level of payment EDC.
It's not a good solution, simply, if you had to do that, because then you have your Economic Development Corporation short-funded.
Right, that's, I mean...
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to come up with a, the terms of an economic development agreement that would be legal, and this has got to have a clawback.
Well, I understand it, but the clawback is my own money. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, we talk about it every day, of economic development, bringing jobs to this community to be able to do that, and now you're asking me to short-change them $12,500. And, but you're telling me you can't do loans and grants. I mean, are we just trying to get around the statute? I thought we'd be able to do it, but this just seems like we're trying to get around the statute. I mean, you're the attorney, not me.
And that's what this is, is it's an effort to get around the way this thing was set up, because the way it was set up, we legally could not do it. And so this is, it's shifting it from FD to FEEDC.
Any other comments?
Yeah, lots. Madam Chair, I don't know why we're here at a meeting tonight, coming down to this. This has had, this has been talked about for three or four months. This program seemed like a valid program. It seemed like it could help out the community. I appreciate what Mr. Van Gheens is doing coming forward, but this should be worked out before it gets to us. And, you know, so now we're gonna go back for another public hearing to do this, when meanwhile, there's a plan in place that we can, we should be able to work on it, and I'm prepared to vote on it.
We definitely should not be hearing it here. I don't like terms like "go around the statute" and "obviously it has to be legal." I don't like terms like that. It doesn't make me feel comfortable voting on something that we have to give a disclaimer that we, that we're going around the statute. I'm not comfortable with that.
I wouldn't ask to bring that. I mean, I don't care if there's a vote on it, I just wanted to get clarification.
Your point is valid, that it's, the clawback is our, we fund economic development. I mean, I get it, but, you know, I'm ready to, if you haven't opened the public hearing yet, have you?
I'm getting ready to.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr. Van Gheens?
No, thank you for, for working on this. Just to share that under the statute, this does sunset at the end of the year if we're not able to secure our match.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I would then close the public hearing. Any questions or any further discussion? Commissioner Booth.
Are you talking about in two weeks?
That is correct, sir.
It's 7:33 PM.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Keith.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Budget Ordinance Amendment, B 230176, appropriating 1.25 million freed-up capacity funding to the FCEDC for the contracted services described within this memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Keith.
All those opposed?
Voting opposed, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Council, Chairwoman Stewart, and Vice Chairman Adams.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Keith?
Yes. Because of our inefficiency, this is going to be matching funds from the state that we had the ability to get, and somehow or another, it got derailed from poor planning. So this is a shame on all of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Keith.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, if you would introduce the next presenter?
So the county attorney and FCEDC president, Robert Van Gheens, will present the item on the incentives for Goodyear Tire.
Mr. Van Gheens?
I'm happy to defer to the county attorney on this if he'd like to present it.
Commissioners, this is a matter that was presented, has been presented a couple of times in closed session in terms of what the proposal is. We do not have a written contract at this time. However, I have had discussion numerous times with emails back and forth with Mr. Van Gheens, and he has with Goodyear. This would be, Goodyear is agreed, has already done an agreement with the state for an incentive payment, which requires them to maintain 1,789 jobs for five years. They are, they are telling us that the equipment that they have to buy with, I'll let Mr. Van Gheens give you the numbers of that, it's more than $120 million worth of new investment that they need to do that. And what they are asking for, and what they're asking for is incentive payments for six years in an amount that would be not more than 50% of the increase in their taxes annually due to its increased investment in taxable property at, what, the value on January the 1st, 2023. So it'd be for the tax year commencing at 2023. The way that we can make this work is the direct jobs must be maintained all years to include beyond the five-year required by state grants. So it'd be one additional year they'd have to maintain those 1,789 jobs, and any breach of the state grant would constitute a breach of the county agreement. So if something fell apart and they were not able to maintain those jobs the first, second, or any of those years, then that would, you know, be the end of the agreement. The other terms in the economic development incentive agreement would be the same sort of language that you're familiar... of language that you're familiar with, and we'll bring that agreement back as soon as we get it drafted and signed by Goodyear.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you. Mr. Train, does this only affect the actual county property tax on the calculation?
Well, it doesn't say this in this memo, but, but yes, in the documents that, the backup that Mr. Van Gens has prepared, it is just for the, currently, the 7.799 county general tax, it would not affect the recreation district tax or the fire district tax.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Gens?
I don't believe I have much to add to that.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers? I'm sorry. We'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion? If I could get a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the economic development agreement, incentive agreement with Goodyear with including all three of the essential terms of the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Manager, we will move on to the rezoning cases.
Tonight, we have public hearings on now three rezoning cases. Arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is obtained. Rebuttals will not, will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairwoman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Planning and inspections Director Rawls Howard will provide a brief overview of each case before each public hearing is opened.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Howard.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners. Before I get started, I also would like to acknowledge Mr. Stan Crumpler, the current chairman of the planning board, who's with us in the audience this evening. So I heard about case 43, so we're not presenting that, so I'm gonna go to case 60-
If he's gonna speak, you need to present it, I would think.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, so I'm presenting 43? All right, no problem.
Wait, did we take it off the, didn't we take it off the agenda?
We have one speaker who had the option to speak.
Are we gonna vote on it afterwards?
Ma'am, we took it off the, I'm not gonna, we took it off the agenda, right?
Yes. I guess the question is, does the board want Mr. Howard to present the case so that the speaker who is here and wants to speak may do that, or?
Madam Man, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but we can't have it both ways.
I understand.
And I'll do whatever the board wants to do, because the gentleman's here. But you can't take it off the agenda and decide you wanna, you wanna hear it.
The attorney, the attorney said that he was well within his right to be able to speak if he wanted to speak.
But we took it off the agenda.
I understand.
You can ask him if he would like, at this time now, since you called, ask if he would like to speak without being presented, I mean, I think he's willing to do that.
What would you like to do? Would you like to speak without a presentation?
I just want to propose a little something, so y'all can count it.
If he wants to speak without, if he wants-
I won't remember, you better wait.
It's up to you if you wanna speak. Well, okay, you have three minutes, it's up to you if you wanna speak or not, but you understand that there's not gonna be-
I'm gonna come back later if you let me.
You wanna come back? When is their presentation?
I wanna do it now and then.
Okay, well, come do it now.
Both times.
No, you would-
He can't do, he can't do that.
You can't do both times, you can do it before, you can do it now, or you can wait until it's presented with the other members.
When they come back too?
They're coming back next month.
Okay, I can come back then.
Yes.
They'll have their chart and all that stuff.
Yes, yes.
And it might be more explained.
Yeah.
Okay.
It ain't gonna take long.
Well, no, we can't do both, we can't do both.
No.
So if you wanna come back, you can come back, or you can speak tonight. It might be better if you come back with the rest of them.
I think I better come back for that.
Okay, I, it'd be better if you come back.
I need all their stuff, sir.
That's right, okay, so we'll move on, okay. Okay, thank you. You can come back, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Howard, move on to the next.
So, okay, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. So we'll go on to case ZON 22-0064 with your permission. Let me set this up. So the case that I have before you this evening is, let me move back here, there it is, ZON You can see where this case is.
ZON 22-0064, zoning from a 1 agricultural district to our 15th subject.
It's okay.
Just close it, just close it. Just close it.
I just got this. Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so the first case we have is case ZON -22-0064. You can see that's, as it's evidenced by the map, this is just in the Hope Mills southwest area of Cumberland County with the star that you see there. The applicant owner is Mr. Ricky and Tina Nelson, the agent is Mr. Michael Adams. The request is to go from A1 agricultural to R15 conditional residential zoning, so that means there is a site plan attached to this, which you'll see in the presentation here shortly. The intent is to put a small multifamily project on the parcel for about, just a little under five and a half acres. So this is the subject property, you can see it's off of Cypress Lakes Road, you can see, see if I can get the arrow here, there we go, so you can't see the black, but this is Cypress Lakes Road, you can see the property itself is highlighted here in red. The majority of the, all the uses that are around it are primarily single-family homes. When you look at the zoning map, this is A1, but there is R10 in the area, you have some R15 a little bit further down the road, and you have some R10, so you have a little bit of a smattering of different types of densities in this area because it is close to an interchange and close to an urban area. There are no hydroic soils or hydroic inclusion soils on the property, but there is water and sewer that's right out on the front of the road, so it would be serviced by utilities if constructed, okay? So when staff looked at this, this was subject to the South Central Land Use Plan, was called for low-density residential in this area, so R7.5 and R15 are comparable districts. So staff felt that it was compatible with the adopted land use plan. So as I mentioned before at the very beginning, as this is a conditional request, we do have a site plans that are attached to this, so the site plan that we have is, is here, so this is what was presented, and we do have conditions that were put on the request as a, as a part of the application. So as you see here, there are two separate lots that will be created, there's a single-family home that sits up here in the front that's also included on this, but the apartments are gonna be eight units in the back, so it's a relatively small project. Now, the setbacks that you see here, even though the setbacks are, as they're listed on the condition sheet or germane for that particular district, there is a considerable amount of distance from, from the property line to the property here. So you have about 94 feet from this line that's sitting here, you have about 65 feet here, and the two setbacks on the northern part, the two lines that you see here are about 47, so almost 50 feet in the, in the top, so I just wanna make sure I pointed that out. But you can see there's somewhat smaller type of townhome type units, so as I said, there were eight, so there are two and two and two and two here. This is the subject property, as you can see. Again, this is a more closed-up view going down that road you just looked at, there's a, a single-family home on it currently. This is looking back on a further, further step-back view. This is looking west on Cypress Lake Road with the property immediately on the left-hand side, you can see the Z sign that we put out here to make sure that we complied with state statute public notification requirements. This is the north view on Cypress Lake Road looking immediately across the street. And this is the east view with the property immediately on the right-hand side, and again, you can see the sign. So staff had recommended approval of the request, when we went to the planning board for this, they had also supported that by a six-to-three vote. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioner Adams?
So I'll just make sure I understand, make sure I understand what I'm looking at. They got A1, and I'm looking at A1 kinda all the way around it, plus the residential and R10 and all of that.
Right.
All right, so on A1, they could build the units if they wanted to, but they could only build three because they'd be like two-acre lots, right?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
And so what is being proposed is to go from two-acre lots to 15,000 square feet lots and build nine units. I mean, that's what this is, nine units. I know you said eight, but this-
Well, it includes the house.
Oh, that includes the house.
Yeah, so there's an existing home that's there that's part of the request, but as far as the development, it's not part of the condo-townhome development.
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around all this residential, that's residential single-family, and then we're looking at proposing to put nine units in here at 15,000 square feet. That just doesn't make sense to me to go that low when we are here in, I ain't gonna say the country, but out in the rural part of Cumberland County, and where they could go ahead and build on the two-acre lot and just be done with it. Just, just-
Commissioner Keith?
Okay, my concerns are a little bit along with Commissioner Adams. So the R10 allows for residential, typically, it's residential, single-family homes. Now, is the CZ, the conditional zoning, so that they can put multifamily homes in there?
No, they can do that by right, depending on the district that they're in, so. You can be able to put a multifamily product in A1, it's the, it's the density that you're going for right now. So, like, for example, like you mentioned eight homes, if you can fit eight lots there, then under R15, you do eight lots, but the, since it is conditional, it's tied to a site plan, they have to stick to whatever seater, so there wouldn't be a subdivision of property. They would build the eight units there, so like, we would look at it as, and there's a calculation in the ordinance, we say so many square feet that you can have for the first unit, the second unit, third and fourth, and so the R15 would allow them to be able to put that type of density here for that type of product.
Well, according to all the plans, it calls for low-density residential. I don't think four, eight, eight-unit multifamily housing is considered low, low-density, but maybe by some, some method I don't know about, I would think that's higher density. So regardless of what they can do, these are mostly single-family homes in this R15, R10, and the R20 in that area?
Yes, sir.
You don't, you're not aware of any other multifamily homes in that area?
We don't get a lot of them in the county in general, I would just say that, so.
It's 'cause most people don't wanna be in the county, they, okay. I think my, my concern is really multifamily housing surrounded by all the single-family housing in the area. So just so I can get clear in my head, Mr. Howard-
Sure.
At what we're asking for, 5.47 acres, at R, they're on A1 now, so that's one house for every two, if we approve just the straight R15, that's one house per every 15,000 square feet or one lot, as opposed to R20, one house for every 20,000, one house per half acre. So how many could they put in if we stayed with the request for R15, and does the conditional zoning affect that at all?
The conditional zoning would affect it, so as I mentioned, so they can't come in, so the request tonight is just to approve the site plan and the conditional zoning, they're not asking to approve a straight rezoning of R15. So the, the request would be to approve the conditional zoning with the conditions that are listed here with the site plan that's attached to it. If they wanna deviate majorly from this site plan, they'd have to go through the process all again to come through a rezoning hearing, so this is only, it's, it's tied very tightly to this site plan with the current request.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Booth?
Thank you. You put the limits up there, and I didn't see, you said it as part of the presentation that there's water and sewer-
Yes.
Nearby. But I don't see it in there, they're required to tap on before they build.
They would have to be able to do that just because of the size of their project.
Okay, I don't see that anywhere.
Okay.
Yes.
It's, it's in, it's in the condition sheet, which was just mentioned to my staff, that they have to tie in the water and sewer, that's a, so like in your packet, we put the condition sheet that all the developers have, you know, sign and agree to, is going through the process, and so a lot of that stuff is laid out in there.
Any other questions? Anything else, Howard?
That's it.
We now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have three speakers in opposition.
Okay.
First speaker is Heath McDonald.
I have some photos, could I give, pass these out to you guys? If you don't mind, I'll wait till you guys get that, that way I can walk you through. Okay, my name is Heath McDonald, I live at 4900 Bramble Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. I'm a lifelong resident of Cumberland County, and I've lived at this property for 20 years. We butt up to the back of, this property adjoins us, we're over here where you see the blue. I have obvious concerns with rental apartments that may bring to our neighborhood increased traffic, vehicle and foot traffic, increased noise, crime, and transient people. Cypress Lakes Road is about one mile, and you've got single-family dwellings on both sides of Cypress Lakes Road. There are no multifamily dwellings whatsoever in Cypress Lakes. I've lived out there for 20 years, and this is a first. I would like to walk you through these pictures because I wanna give everybody time to speak. Photo one shows the subject property that we're talking about, that they are trying to rezone. Photo two is a ditch for the drainage that runs between their property and my property. Photo three that you see is an overview as well of the area, which shows the high density of single-family dwellings. As you can see, all that surrounds this property in question is single-family dwellings. Photograph four shows the front of the subject property looking west, and please note the grade that runs directly to our property. As you can see in photo four, the grade of that property runs directly to us. Photo five shows the roadway looking back east, and once again, notice the grade back to the ditch. Photograph six shows the beginning of the ditch, and as you can see, this was a recent repair where the shoulder has washed out. All of this dirt washed out down the ditch, and now the ditch is, is an even bed. Photograph seven shows the ditch from my back porch during a rainstorm about a year ago. $15,000 in damage to me on that rainstorm. Cypress Lakes area has continued to, we've, we've continued to increase development, 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 but nothing's been done about our infrastructure out there. The first 12 years that I lived in my home, no water problems. Since we've started development out there, I've got, I've flooded out three times. I've now got flood insurance, and I'm not in a floodplain. Photo eight shows the back, shows my backyard during the rainstorm. Photo nine shows my backyard ditch from my neighbor's point of view. Photo 10 shows the rainstorm from my neighbor's point of view. The point that I'm trying to make is there's no infrastructure for this. This is gonna be an apartment complex, call it what you want to, eight condos, they're gonna have parking lots, we're gonna have flooding, we're gonna have more problems. I ask you to please not approve this zoning request, it's, it's gonna deter, it's gonna cause problems in a very stable, safe community that we're all out there to raise our children. We're not out here trying to create investment properties, we're out here just trying to support our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Robert Laverick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Laverick, I live at 4825 Kiara Drive. It is, if you see that blue line where the red is, go over and the blue line up, second lot on the right. The reason I'm here today is to oppose this development, and there are absolutely no apartments in that area, none. I drove every single road, there are none. Currently, Grace Creek Middle School is greater than 100% capacity. Alderman Road Elementary School is at about 95%, as well as Grace Creek High School. Down that road, just past this road here, there's 150 houses, single-family houses going in. On Kiara Drive, if you go the neighborhood behind it, on LaGuardia, they are just approved this year for another 25 units, getting ready to be put in there, houses. There is no infrastructure out there for an apartment complex. We have one road in to Hope Mills- We have one road in to Hope Mills, and that's Highway fifty-nine. And if you've watched the news, Highway fifty-nine has just been removed as a primary route from the state. And I think that was through the request of the county, because you can't even get into Hope Mills. Three hours a day, it's a parking lot in the morning, and three hours a day, it's a parking lot in the afternoon trying to get out of that area. You can't. We have one grocery store within a five-mile radius, and that's a food line. And I talked to the regional manager of that food line because anybody who lives out there knows it's piss-poor. He said it is one of the most neglected stores in the food line chain. There's nothing. People have to drive past that to come into town. That is the only store we have. Retail, we have a tractor supply company, two-dollar generals, and a dollar, a Family Dollar store. That's all we have out there for retail. We have nothing. We can't even get gas. Gas is sitting down on Chickenfoot Road. Everybody's got LP tanks out in Cypress Slakes, and they won't even, we can't even get a natural gas line out that way. We're not ready for it. We're not ready for it. They just had to widen the end of Sand Hills Road just to accommodate the people that live there now. Because I believe Sand Hills Road, about a year and a half ago, was fifty thousand people traveling that road every day. We can't do it. It's too full. The infrastructure's not there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our last speaker is Misty Jordan.
Good evening. I'm Misty Jordan. I live at forty-nine twenty-eight Bramble Street. So, my property is going to back up to this proposed community. And it's my understanding that these are, they're multifamily homes, but, and we're all single-family. I don't even have to say that again. I think the gentlemen have made that pretty clear. But it's our understanding this is not going to be permanent residence. These are rental-only. None of this is rental. These are our homes. This is where we raise our children. It is a sweet, precious community. But he's right. We're for growth. I love growth. You can't stop it. But there's right growth, and there's wrong growth. And I'm just asking that we just pause on growth in the Grace Creek community as a whole right now? Because who's suffering really are our kids. I have a tenth grader, and I'm a, I have a senior, and I'm thankful they're almost finished because those schools are so incredibly crowded right now. But really, this, we don't live in a rental community. These are all permanent residents all around here. These homes range from twelve hundred square feet to fi, I mean, it's all over, five thousand square feet. But they're all permanent homes. And what we're fearful of is, one, it's just too crowded. We don't know, we don't know the size of these proposed units. We don't know what they're going to look like. But from right, from right now, it doesn't fit in with the harmony of the Cypress Slakes, Grace Creek community. Also, what precedence is it setting? If we now have these rental communities at this part of Cypress Slakes Road, what's going to happen at the end of Cypress Slakes Road? What's going to happen down Chickenfoot Road? There's a lot of land out there, and these folks are dying off, and their kids are selling their land, and this is what's happening. So, I just ask that you don't, don't pass this. I do remember when Heath's yard flooded and the road flooded, and as, as our whole neighborhood was out there trying to figure out how we were going to keep the water out of Heath's house. I've lived there for twenty years. That's the first time I've ever witnessed that. It was about eight years ago, or probably less than that, during one of our big rainstorms. But that was when they've already started developing along Cypress Slakes Road and actually along Sand Hill as well. And it is, it's causing water problems for us. Also, it's a beautiful, all-natural area. We have a ton of wildlife out there. And I'm just afraid of what this continued growth is going to do to that wildlife and just the overall natural look of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
I will close the public hearing at this time. Are there any questions or discussions? Commissioner Boos?
Thank you. Ross, on the map, he's got two of it here showing the drain. Is this draining away from this pond or lake through the house there and down? Or is it coming from somewhere up here to the pond or the lake?
That I couldn't be able to answer the question. I don't have information on that today. I mean, we would typically look at that during the site planning stage where we make the engineer address all those types of drainage issues.
Mr. McDonald? Which way does your red line go? Is the water coming into this pond and lake here, or is that the, one of the drains for the lake?
It goes from Cypress, the ditch goes from Cypress Slakes Road down to my house, and it goes under a twenty-four-inch culvert to the lake.
Right here?
Yes, sir. Everything's feeding that lake. And what's happening is that ditch...
Use the microphone.
What's happening is, over time, that ditch has continued to fill up and fill up. That ditch used to be about this deep. Now, it's even with my yard. Because the state goes out there and they just fix where the road washes out, but they don't fix the problem. So, now, I'm stuck flooding. I discussed it with the builder's representative. No contact for them. They don't care about our issue.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask one question? Because I see all of these houses out here. Are they on water and sewer? Are they on septic tanks?
Yeah, we're all on water and sewer.
Okay. Not all of them?
Our street, yeah, our street is, our street is, Bramble Street is all water and sewer. I don't know about the surroundings.
Everything else is septic, right?
I think our street, they used, they put us on water and sewer going to the high school.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, public, you're welcome. Public hearing is now closed. Now, what, call for a motion, please.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, I have a question.
Push that button. You have to push your button. Commissioner Jones, go ahead. There's a button there that you push. It's okay. Now, go ahead.
Okay. My question is, when we're talking about these particular homes, are these going to be, these apartments, are they going to be luxury apartments? I know there's some concerns about if this is going to fit in. Another question, did you all do any research in regards to? My concern is because I know we do, of course, need more housing. I'm a homeowner myself, but the reality is sometimes rental par, you know, properties are someone's home. Basically, everyone can't afford to buy a home. So, I say that to say, in reference to these apartments you're going to build, are these going to be high-quality? What I mean by that is luxury apartments? Or can you elaborate on that for me a little bit, please?
Generally, as staff, due to federal fair housing laws, we generally don't get into a discussion as to whether they're luxury, low-income or not. That's something, we look at it as much more generically to say, is a multifamily allowed in this particular area? And that's what we look into. So, for example, if we started to initiate those kind of conversations, I think it would take us down a path in a legal situation that I don't think that staff really would want to go into as far as, you know, is it owner-occupied, or is it renter-occupied? Those are all federal fair housing considerations. Is it going to be luxury or not? We, as, as staff, we're looking at it in a little bit more, at a bigger view. I wish the developer was here so we could be able to do, so he could probably maybe elaborate on his project. But as staff, no, I can't be able to elaborate on that.
Okay. I didn't know if the developer had given you all that information, since there was a concern from the residents about the, you know, how it would look for their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Commissioner Keith?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion. And in the case of zoning, two-two-das-zero-zero-six-four, I move to deny the rezoning from A1 Agriculture District to R-15 Residential District, conditional zoning, and find the request is not consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for low-density residential dislocation. And the board finds that this request is not reasonable or in the public interest.
Second.
And, sir, it's not reasonable in the public interest for a specific reason. And I think you could find that it is not consistent, harmonious with the surrounding property because it is the only multifamily housing in the, in the area. You've got to, you've got to state some reason. You've got to state some reason for it.
All right. That it's not consistent with the existing housing in the area.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded to deny this?
But they can still build these multi-dwelling units. Just can't build nine. They can still build three.
Yes.
Just so everybody's clear, they can still build these.
Yes.
Okay.
They can make the math work, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to deny it. All those in favor of denial?
Voting, voting to deny. Chairwoman Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioner Boos, and Commissioner Keith?
All those?
Go ahead.
Those who are opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Council.
Thank you. Motion is denied. We will move on to zoning case twenty-two zero zero seven-two. Madam Manager, if you want to present this? Oh, you're already up there? Okay. Mr. Howard?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Let me get back to the first slide. So, along the same lines of thinking, this is in the same general area, as you can see, as evidenced by the map. So, this is around the lower part of the Hope Mills area and the southwestern part of Cumberland County. So, the request is, is from Withers and Ravenel, Carolini and Properties. They are the agent who is acting on the owner's behalf. The request is to go from R-six conditional use. Conditional use is an older standard of zoning that we had years ago, but it's still valid. So, we're going from R-six conditional use to R-five conditional zoning. The intent is to increase the density of the multifamily allowance or what the entitlement is on the property currently, which I'll go into as a part of my presentation. But the intent is to put two-hundred-and-sixty-four multifamily dwelling units on about twenty acres of land. So, it's twenty-point-four-eight. So, just to give you a little bit of idea of where this is. So, this is the Grace Creek High School, and so, let me see if I can get the, get my mouse here working right. This is Chickenfoot Road, so you can see coming down here. This is Celebration Drive. The property that's in question sits right here in this elongated piece of land. Just for note that this property at some point was also included, because you saw the R-six CU that I just mentioned where it's coming from. So, this property was part of a larger planned project for commercial and office development here with apartments on this long piece here. So, I'll let the applicant, if they're here, to go into the specifics of what sort of the dynamics of what that were. But this right here is entitled right now for a multifamily project, but they're coming in to see about increasing the density for that. So, as you can see for Grace Creek High School, you can see the subdivisions that pretty much surround all of it. And so, anyway, moving forward. This is the zoning map for the property. You can see it's A1 with Grace Creek High School here. As I said before, it has a lot of this conditional use that was part of an older request. So, this was wrapped into this larger piece here, when, so this piece is still currently zoned for office and institutional and commercial. So, we're just talking about the residential component that's here. But you can see it has pretty much R-10 and A1 all around it. So, there is some small semblance of hydroric soils, at least by our data, for the property up in the northern portion. But there is water and sewer completely around the property with the intent that, as part of the conditions, they would be attaching this to water and sewer just by the sheer density of the whole thing. They would have to. So, the South Central Plan calls for this to be mixed-use, which promotes a building of quality housing, providing flexibility for different types of higher-density types of uses to go there that are existing, that are close to existing or future commercial centers and to promote infill development. So, the R-five and the mixed-use, CPC-one, PC-two, and O-N-I are all districts that are deemed to be compliant with the land use plan. So, staff felt that it was consistent, and we based our recommendation accordingly. So, this is the site plan that you see in question. The geography here is a, is a little different because this is north. So, this is the Celebration Drive. So, this is turned on its side. So, north is going to be what you would otherwise see as east on this property here. So, the idea is that the property would have eleven buildings, housing at two-hundred-and-sixty-four units, forty garages and stories, storage buildings, five-hundred-and-forty-six parking spaces, a pool house, clubhouse, and a park area. As it stands right now, I will point out, the main access is planned to be off of Celebration Drive, which you see here. They did provide, per the fire marshal's request, and it's also part of the conditions there. This is a access going through the planned commercial and office that I showed you just a minute ago. The idea is that they were going to put a fire access here that would be limited access for fire for right now. The idea is when this develops, we had worked with the applicant to line the driveway up for the possibility of a future road building that would take this road by early drive through the property and in here, so it would be an official, open, public right-of-way for a street. But for right now, it's planned to be just a secondary fire access for the fire, for the fire trucks. This is just another schematic, so you can see it in color. But you can see, this is the boundary of the school here on the, what you would probably see as the northern part, but it's actually the eastern part of the property. And you can see the storage pond for stormwater and so forth and so on. But you can see the various amenities that we have on here. So, some of the key conditions of approval and phasing of this, and so, you know, the applicant has expressed a desire to phase this in, so it'll be built in just pieces as it goes, is that two-hundred-and-sixty-four types of units are going to be the max they could put on here. There was be an easement agreement with the property owner, and emergency access shall be permanent unless changed to a public road in the future, which we're anticipating. And I've been talking with the applicant. If that were to happen, we would be pushing forward with that. And that the secondary access, I don't know what just happened there. That's interesting. Oh. So, the secondary access has to be constructed prior to the issuance of a CO for the, up to the hundredth unit, and that's per the fire code. So, we, but we put that in the condition for it as well. So, the development profile, if you look at the existing zoning, they are entitled right now to one-hundred-and-seventy-four dwelling units. The R-five, if it was a straight R-five zoning, would permit four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dwelling units on there. The applicant is conditioning that down to two-hundred-and-sixty-four. You can see the setbacks, but for the most part, the setbacks are being met for the R-five district, which would be applicable. This is the subject property standing on Celebration Drive, looking into the property. It's just pretty much woods right now, so you're not looking very far. This is the west view on Celebration Drive. You can see the property immediately on the left-hand side with the zoning sign for the public hearing. This is the north view, looking at the neighborhood just immediately across the street. Another view, this is kind of stepping back. This is where the office and institution and the commercial development would be on the right-hand side, but the tract is just on the other side of that. It's a landlocked property, so we try to get the best angle that we possibly can. So, staff had recommended approval of the request. When we took it to the planning board, they had voted to deny it by nine-to-zero vote. So, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioner Boos?
Thank you. Do you, do you have any idea on the square foot? I know not everyone's going to be just completely cookie-cutter, but are we looking at, I think, as Ms. Jones asked, are these smaller units, luxury, spread-out, four-bedroom, three-bath things? Or do we have any idea what they are on the square foot?
I don't think we've gotten to that level of detail yet, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you. I don't know how the planning board and this planning staff can be so unanimous on this one. I am, I am concerned a little bit about the fire marshal saying that they would have to meet the fire code because right now, they are far enough outside, they wouldn't be serviced by Hope Mills. So, they'd have to be serviced by one of the volunteer fire departments.
That's my understanding.
I'm not sure how to ask this next question, but they, will these be classified as single-family homes?
No. Not from a planning standpoint, no, they won't.
So, would they pay a fire district tax? Or would they be valued as a commercial property? Do you know that?
I would not know that. My, no, I would not know that.
They'd be, if it's apartments, they'd be valued as residential property, and they would be subject to all the taxes in the district.
But not taxed individually as single homes?
No, no.
They would be, they'd be taxed as a whole.
The entire parcel, yes, sir.
And then that, that would be where the fire, which is usually substantially less than it would be if it was single-family. So, what am I concerned about is we have, and this may be a small thing, but we talk about public safety, that you have a volunteer fire department that's having to, because Hope Mills will not service this. It's in, it's outside the city limits of Hope Mills. They will have that additional capacity that they're already stretched very thin out there. And does the school attendance and capacities come into planning staff's recommendation? Do y'all look at that?
We do look, I mean, we get their feedback, but, yeah. But, but like, the way that we look at schools is just like, you know, how we look at roads. The schools are going to be responsive to whatever's built there. So, I mean, you know, like typically, typically, when you're looking at the home construction.
Can we get some order, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Howard.
I mean, it's just like roads about, you know, how, how folks will say, you know, how come there's no road here? Or how come there's no school here? I, you know, I can speak, at least from my years of experience, that when you're dealing with DOT and so forth, they're data-driven. So, if they see the... So, if they see the units and the demand, then they're going to start making changes about what schools get built and how things get redistricted, so.
You'd mentioned a couple times that we can't get into the specifics of the size of these properties. What I'm concerned more about is if they are single-bedroom or two-bedroom units, the chances of them having children in the school system is less than if they were three or larger. Just the numbers. But you can't ask, we can't, we don't know that yet, do we?
No.
What the size of the apartments will be?
No, we don't really know that information at this stage.
Thank you. I got what I need.
Okay, thank you. We will now open up the public comment session. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have 12 speakers, four in favor, eight in opposition.
Okay, and that will take us past our time?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we are recommending, with so many people, we may need to have somebody represent a group. How many in?
We have four in favor. I believe Mr. Charleston is here to represent the group.
That's great. The other folks that signed up are yielding their time.
Okay. Yielded your time to you?
I can't.
That was a question. That was a question, if that's what you were saying, that they yielded their time. And the time allotted is how many minutes? Three?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many in opposed?
For, Madam Chair, under the rules, your rules, if one person is representing several speakers, then that person would be allocated five minutes. I think he said that all the 10 minutes has been allocated to him, so he'll get five minutes. That's it.
Okay. Attorney Charleston would get five minutes and speaking for, in favor of, then how many opposed? And they're allowed, how many minutes?
Basically, be about a minute and five seconds.
Okay, we'll just go with two minutes apiece for those who are opposed. Okay, and the public session doubt, open. Attorney Charleston?
Whoever the figure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's doing the final.
Okay, yes.
Before I get started, I'd like to just hand out some materials that I will refer
Okay, Mr. Charleston, we're ready.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Jonathan Charleston. My address is 201 Hay Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here tonight along with June Cowell, who's the planner for this project, Casey King, who's the owner's rep, Lofty Smith, who will be able to address environmental issues, and Lisa London, who is a traffic consultant. I raise them and point them out to you in case you have any questions specific to traffic, environmental issues, or planning. As stated, I'm here tonight on behalf of Carolenean Properties, which is a Fayetteville-based company. My client is the owner of the subject 20.48-acre vacant tract of land located at Celebration Drive and Chickenfoot Road. I will start out by simply saying, all property owners, including my client, seek the highest and best use of their property. You'll hear folks speaking in opposition that believe the same thing. Carolenean requests that the Board of Commissioners approve their rezoning request from R6 Residential District, conditional use, to conditional zoning, to R5 Residential District, conditional zoning. The owner is requesting the rezoning to allow construction of a multifamily development consisting of a maximum, that's the condition, 264 units, which will include a management office and other amenities. What we're simply asking for is the ability to build two additional buildings consisting 48 additional apartment units. Under the current zoning, as was mentioned by Mr. Howard, the owner is permitted to construct a multifamily development consisting of a maximum 218 units. So, without getting any rezoning or any action by this Board of Commissioners, the developer can build a 218-unit development on the site. The proposed plan calls for construction, as I stated earlier, of 11 buildings consisting of 24 units in each building. The proposed apartment mix consists of, and this is to Mr. Keith's question, 60 one-bedroom units, or 22% of the project, 174 two-bedroom units, or 65.9%, and 33 three-bedroom units, or 11.4% of the unit. As many of you know, there is a severe shortage of housing in Cumberland County. By some estimates, there is an approximate shortage of 20,000 housing units in our county. In addition, the rental costs for multifamily housing have continued to rise because of the shortage of the units. Simple to put, supply and demand. How do we know this? As Mr. Howard said, the data tells us so. There was a double-digit rent growth in the U.S. recorded in late 2021 and early 2022, which coincides with the record low apartment vacancy rates here in our county. As demand continues to outpace supply, the apartment vacancy rate in the county has been on decline for an extended period of time. Now, there is a lot of publications that talk about the rise in rents and the supply shortage. I won't go into that. There's a number of publications in national magazines and local articles published that talk about the shortage of housing and the high development costs, in part because of the regulations involved. But what I will say is, in this case, if you consider this request on the merits, it makes perfect sense for the Board of Commissioners to grant this request. The land use plan allows for it, as Mr. Howard indicated. The planning staff recommends approval of the project, and the impact on the infrastructure has been stated. There is public water, Public Works Commission water and sewer. The schools are not, opposition will say overcrowded, will say that, you know, they're not, and there is an additional school that's been cited in some of the opposition's materials that suggest that the Alderman School is included, but it isn't. Economic Development and Emergency Services have all signed off on the proposal. What I will simply say that, to Mr. Keith, to your question, in this graph right here, it shows one thing, is that is the majority of apartment households are occupied by one member, and very little are occupied by families. This complex only has three units. Final thing I will say, the endangered species, the red cock-headed woodpecker issue, that has been taken off the endangered species list by the federal regulators. It's actually pending in Congress right now to make it just a threatened matter. But to the extent there are any questions, we have other folks here that can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston.
Can I ask?
Commissioner Adams.
Well, one's a comment. We talk about affordable housing and lack of affordable housing in this community. I don't think this is affordable housing, what I'm looking at. So, when you say that there's a lack of housing and everything, that's a little bit different than affordable housing, because I'm looking at these units. I don't think that goes down to what we call an affordable housing, but that's a whole no.
But not affordable, but lack of housing units.
The issue that I have, and everybody knows every time I bring it up, is one way in and one way out. And that has always been, Ross, can you go back to the one with that supposedly road?
Talk about this one?
That one, go back. That one. So, I know this is going to be built in phases. And y'all are looking at, and this is a conditional use, so I would add this, even if I was going to think about doing this, is that that is not weighted until everything's done, but that you all would accept that, make that a road in and out of here? Because I, one way in and one way out, just, you got the water and sewer issue that I used to address, but the one way in, one way out is a concern to me.
Right. Commissioner Adams, you hit a very important point. The developer has agreed to turn the emergency access, which was initially designated, into a permanent road.
At the beginning of the project?
Yes, I think that is.
At the beginning of the project?
Yes, at the beginning of the project.
I'm not waiting for a phase in.
At the beginning of the project. As a condition, that's an acceptable condition.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. Push, can you just, yes.
So that I know that you want to speak.
I did hit it. Hit it again.
You didn't.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My question is, how many units did you say there was going to be for this particular project, again?
It's conditioned as a maximum of 264, although, if it weren't conditioned, I believe the number is like 400-plus units. So, it'd be conditioned at 264 units. The only thing that's different, as I stated earlier, this project could be developed without the county commissioners doing anything, but what the developer is asking for is the ability to add two additional buildings and 48 additional units. So, for 264 units. So, really, what you're considering is that. And one of the things that I wanted to point out to your question is, and to Mr. Keith's question, Commissioner Keith's question, the majority of, the data shows that the majority of apartment dwellers are single people or couples. So, that's why we have the very low number of three-bedroom, and the majority of the units are one- and two-bedroom units. So, we don't believe there will be significant impact on the school system in the district.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston. We will now move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Keith?
Thank you. Mr. Howard? The existing zoning right now is R6, correct?
Correct. CU, conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yes, sir.
Now, your graph tells me that R6 CU would only allow up to 174 dwelling units. Now, Mr. Charleston just said if the zoning was R5, which it is not, it could have up to 468.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I mean, this is what we're, the data that we're going through, through the records that we have.
Why do we even have that zoning of R5? I don't know.
I'm sorry?
We have some documentation. It says the existing zoning is R6, which allows for 174 units. Right now, they could start building tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay. But then we have another cell here that says zoning R5 with an asterisk, that says 468. And Mr. Charleston had said that they could build 468.
That's if they went to, I'm assuming, a conventional R5 district. If you did five, I'm assuming, yes, if you did 5,000.
That would have to be rezoned from where it is right now.
Absolutely.
But today, right now, Mr. Charleston and his team of developers could go out and put in 174 units without anything happening, right?
That's the approved plan. So, again, Mr. Keith, the R6 that you see here, and the OICP and CP, this was all approved as one master-type plan that we have in our office, and it does call out that many units being approved to go there.
I just don't want to confuse the subject, because the intent, what everybody just heard was, we could build 468.
No, that's not what it said.
Okay. To clarify, we could build right now 174.
Yeah.
No, not without the zoning. Somebody's wrong, because the documentation I have says 174 with the existing zoning.
Hold on one second, Commissioner.
If they're taking away the seismic soils, I don't know if they are.
So, by our records...
I just want to be clear, everybody knows what we're doing here. It's a big deal.
So, by our records, we have, it was, is to increase it from 206, which is what they have on the property, to 264. I think that's what he mentioned by the amount of increase that would be going on on the property. That's on the staff report that we had put together that should be on the first page.
On the development review, it has a different number, the development potential.
Oh, was it under the, yeah. I apologize about that. So, that was under the previous conditional use. So, how many units could they put there? Under the existing CU?
They can do what now?
206 under the existing CU, which is what they have right now.
Okay. So, we're looking at 60, well, 50 something?
58.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Madam Manager?
No, you go into the opposition. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry.
So, I want to be clear, they're just, they already have approval for 206. They're asking for, so if we do my math right, they want to add on 58 more units? Is that not correct?
They want to increase it to 264.
Okay, so that'd be 58 then, correct?
All right, that's the way my math works.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have eight speakers in opposition.
Okay, they will all be given two minutes. You would call for the first speaker, please.
Jillian Erhardt. Hi, a couple of people have offered to give up their time. Can I have an extra minute if they do that?
How many? Oh, well, we can give you, are they okay with you taking the five?
Well, I want to allow anyone else that wants. I don't want to take away from.
Oh, you got three, yeah.
Okay, we'll give you three minutes.
Okay. All right, my name is Jillian Erhardt. I live at 1112. Okay. Okay, my name is Jillian Erhardt. Okay, I live at 1112 Mashpee Strive, and I'm going to talk super fast. First, we were under the impression that this was zoned for a single family, not for apartments, so that was kind of new tonight. The other thing is, I'll share this with you, is that we actually looked at all the school information, and we called and we got numbers based on the South Central Use Plan and the Cumberland County websites for the schools. Two of the three elementary schools are already at capacity and over. Graves Creek Middle School has 1,127 students, and max capacity is 1,000. It's already over by 127 students. Graves Creek High School is at max capacity is 1,270. They have 1,400 students, so 130 students over at the high school already. The other thing that they talk about is that road is not built yet, and a lot of the points that he brought up are in contention to the things that we brought up at the last planning board. Their intent is to have that road gated and only for fire access. So, unless they did open it up, it is only one way in and out. The traffic is already extremely backed up. If you try to drop off your kids at the elementary school, the middle school, or the high school in the morning, you cannot get out. The other thing is that students walk to school on the sidewalk on that side of the road. There are no crossguards at the point where they have there. There's two crossguards at work. They rotate between the two sidewalks at the top, and then they rotate the one at the end of the road. So, you have multiple children that walk across from Bridlewood and through Cypress that are going to have to cross. There's also no light at the entrance of that. So, no one would be able to turn out left from those apartments. The roadway is not built for there. The other thing is the endangered species, they talk about birds, regardless of birds. We're talking about bats. So, Cape Fear Wildlife has removed multiple bats from the eaves in our homes. They are migratory, and they hibernate in the winter, so we requested a study, but they couldn't come right now. The thing is, Cape Fear Wildlife did confirm they are little brown bats, and they are on the endangered list. And what it is, is that provides a place for them. Also, deforestation in North Carolina has lost 24% of its forest in the past 24 years. This is a significant decrease in tree cover and increase in CO2 emissions. The top five county for deforestation was Blading County. And we're talking about Cumberland County, but if you look at this, we are literally five miles from the Blading County line. We are in the compass of three counties right there, over there on the edge of Cypress Lakes. The other thing is the hydroric soil, they really scanned over that. But if you go back and look at the slide, there's major hydroric soil over there in the complete beginning part of the apartments that they are trying to build. The other thing is, like you said, we are outside the Hope Mills city limit, so police and fire do not... The other thing is, like you said, we are outside the Hope Mills city limit, so police and fire do not come there, we have to wait on sheriff. So you wanna talk about adding in all these families with no immediate concerns for fire, except for volunteers, and there is no police service, we have to wait on the sheriffs to come out there. So overcrowding of schools, traffic, one-way in and out, kids going to school, crossguards, fire police, the site suitability for building is not good, it is in there. If you look, it is considered severe on the Central Use Line Plan. It says site suitability for this part of the area is severe suitability, um, which is why the joint planning board also disagree, uh, disapproved it. Um, we were under the tent that it was single-family, and the reason we wanna move to this multifamily complex is because of the site suitability is not there for them to build that many homes based on the cost.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, that was a lot. We, we had a petition, and it had over four hundred signatures, and I'm gonna pass that out to you.
Thank you.
And then I also have the stuff on the annuals with my sites, and then I also wrote an article for the effects on nature for children.
Okay, just go ahead and pass, just go ahead and pass it out. Madam Clerk, you will, um, go ahead and, you can give that to us, um, after this. But if you would go ahead and call the next speaker, and if you have yielded your time, we ask that you not come up. I did not get the names of those who yielded the time. So when the name is called, if you have yielded your time, please do not get up and speak, so that we can get through in fairness.
Cheryl Bailey.
Okay, good evening, uh, my name is Cheryl Bailey. Have we started?
One moment, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, okay. I have, I've lived out, I live at nine nine eight Thistle Gold Drive, and, okay, thank you. Um, and I have lived out there for twenty-one years. Um, I started a neighborhood watch out there. We had, so accountability, um, I would like to invite all of you out there to come at traffic time for schooling, so you can see what we are dealing with out there. The traffic is horrendous. So when you come out there, we have one signal light, and we had to petition for that. We had to have traffic counters come out and count for us, so we did that. So why aren't they having to do that as well? And honestly, to check with the schools, I would really love to invite you all out there to take a field-
If you could talk to the microphone, please?
To, um, to take a field trip with myself and with Jillian, to show them what is going on out there. The traffic, it's timed traffic, but it is really bad out there. We have two hundred and twenty-one homes in my subdivision alone, uh, and then there's Braxton, which there is, um, a couple hundred. And then when you go down Braxton Road by the, the maze. So I would like to have everybody come out and have, take a field trip. I'm available tomorrow. Seriously. Because you'll, you'll then see what we are dealing with, and our children. The crossing guard, um, traffic comes out after COVID, they were making their own, uh, people making their own, um, traffic lanes, if you will. But also, if they would put up the other map, where the high school and the junior high is, if you go back, there's a park, but there is so much more development out there, and they didn't show that. So, and I don't think that's fair as us as a resident, and maybe in twenty-one years, along with several other residents that are out there. And our kids are important, our grandchildren are important. And, um, I'd really please, please consider not allowing this to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
No, you're very welcome.
Next speaker?
Mark Lupton.
Thank you.
Barbara Culp.
Thank you.
Patsy Orroni Holland.
Thank you.
Rob Eckhart.
Thank you.
Alita, I don't have a last name.
Hi, my name is Willie, and my wife Alita, we live at fifty-one oh five Pride Lane in Hope Mills. Um, I keep hearing people talk about apartments. I keep hearing talk about affordable housing and low-income housing. This project, from all I can see, that's exactly what you're gonna end up with, the projects, in ten years. One of the reasons is because, first and foremost, nobody can afford it. If you look at the prices, if you're talking about people that, we had people talking about they were homeless, they can't fit none of this. That ain't even, I live right there. I have to come down that street every day, where that long fence you saw. At eight o'clock in the morning and two-thirty in the evening, I can't get backwards and forward to my house. This access highway he's talking about building, it won't do nothing but come right through somebody's street. I don't know what apartments this guy's ever lived in, that he's talking about only one and two people. I've lived in apartments most of my life, and I'm seventy-two years old. And I've never been in an apartment with just one or two people. There was eight of us in apartments, there were six of us, there were three of us. There's never been an apartment. The idea that you can take two hundred and sixty-four pieces of property with people that are paying a less rent base than the people that are paying single, paying taxes for their homes is unfair. The idea that you can take and not improve the infrastructure, just throw up these houses, and they're not gonna be luxury apartments, they're not even gonna be decent for very long, they're gonna be Home Depot houses. It's not a doubt in my mind, I beg you, please, please, vote against this. It's not in the best interest of Cumberland County, it's most definitely not in the best interest of the children and the kids of Hope Mills. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
We have one more speaker, Dan Porter.
He's giving it to me. Good evening, my name is Mary Porter, I live on Thistle Gold Drive, right, uh, in the Bridlewood subdivision. I'm retired, I try to make my doctor's appointments, you know, ten o'clock or after. Unfortunately, that doesn't always happen, and you have to leave earlier. One day, just recently, I had an early morning appointment. I sat at the traffic light on walking trail, making a left, trying to make a left onto Chickenfoot. I sat there for four traffic lights. And it's not only just the people trying to make the left. Chickenfoot Road is bumper to bumper, it's a two-lane road. They keep building more and more developments, and the infrastructure is not there. It can take me a half an hour, and I'm right there by the high school and the middle school. It can take me a half an hour to get from my house into Hope Mills. That's a, it's not even five miles. We have no grocery stores down there, we, there's no infrastructure at all. They just keep building and building and building, even though they're single-family houses. The streets are not, have not been widened. All of Chickenfoot is two lanes, all the way into Hope Mills, it's two lanes. Through Hope Mills, it's two lanes. You either have to hop on ninety-five and deal with whatever's going on on ninety-five, and hopefully go to eighty-seven to get around the city, if you have to get into Fayetteville. The school traffic is horrendous. They have made, there are cars that have made their own lanes. It's already a two-lane left-hand turn, one lane going straight ahead, and another lane going to the right. And somehow or another, they have stuck another lane in between, because people get upset, they don't, or they're passing on the side-
Thank you.
-of the road.
Thank you so much.
And it just needs to be taken care of, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
I will close the public hearing. Um, Commissioner Jones. Oh, your button was pushed that time. Commissioner Adams.
Uh, Madam Chair, in case, uh, zoning case twenty-two zero zero seven two, I move to approve the rezoning request from R six Residential District CU Conditional Use to R five Residential District CZ Conditional Zoning, adding the condition of the road, uh, that it become, uh, at the beginning of the project, and find that the request is consistent with the South Central Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for mixed use at this location. Uh, the board would find the request is reasonable in the public interest, as it is harmony and compatible to the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly second, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Council, and Vice Chairman Adams.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Chairwoman Stewart, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
It did not pass.
The motion did not pass. We will now move on to items of business.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You actually have not taken action, because you, right now, you have not taken any action. The motion that you made did not pass.
Okay, so we need to deny the motion.
You have neither approved nor denied it, so you would, someone would need to make a motion to deny. It may not pass either, but you need to go through that step one more step.
Okay, is there a motion to deny?
I, I got it. And the ca, and the, Madam Chair, I'll mention, the case zoning two-two dash zero zero seven two, I move to deny the rezoning request from R six Residential District Conditional Use to R five Residential Conditional Zoning, and find the request is not consistent with the South Central Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for mixed use in this location. Board finds that the request is not in harmony with the character of the surrounding land use activities and zoning due to concerns of increased traffic, school overcrowding generated by the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the denial?
Voting in favor of the denial, Chairwoman Stewart, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Council, and Vice Chairman Adams.
You have neither affirmed nor denied the, the, uh, uh, request. That just means that they are not precluded from bringing it back within a year.
They don't have to wait a year.
No, because you have, the, the request not been, it's not been affirmed or denied.
Okay.
That means he can bring it back, because it wasn't either, uh, approved or denied, because we didn't have our seventh person, so he can bring it back at any time. He doesn't have to wait the year. Normally, you have to wait the year if you deny it. All right.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to items of business.
You got seven, four.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got one more.
Give him a chance if anybody wants to leave.
Okay, we'll wait a moment, so that if anybody would like to leave now, they can do that at this time.
Yeah, it goes through the process again, yes ma'am.
If, if everyone can please exit quietly if you're leaving, so that we can continue on with the meeting that's still going in progress.
Okay, hold, hold on one second, let me-
We're still, we're still in a meeting. Okay, if we can continue, please. We will now move on to zoning case twenty-two zero zero seven four.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, as stated, this is, uh, Z O N twenty-two dash oh oh seven four. Uh, so rezoning from R six Residential C three Plan Commercial and C P Plan Commercial Districts to, um, I'm sorry, from C three Heavy Commercial District and C P Plan Commercial Districts to C P Plan Commercial District Conditional Zoning. So as you can see, the request is around in the Hope Mills area, um, getting a lot of attention in that area, I guess, lately. So in the southwestern part of the county, as indicated by the star up on the map. So as I said, the applicant, uh, well, the applicant is Ronald Hammond. The request is go from R six, C three, and C P to C P Conditional Zoning. The intent is to expand a business opportunity for dump truck parking and personal trade vehicles on the property that you see highlighted here on the map. So this is West Mountain Drive.
It really doesn't, it's on West Gillespie Street. It's located west of Gillespie Street, south of Moody Street.
Sorry, okay, stand corrected.
I was looking at, uh, that's what it says.
I'm sorry about that. I stand corrected. So, um, anyway, so, just as, just so we can move forward here, the, um, it's for five and a half acres located, as you can see on West Mountain Drive and the nine ninety-five interchange you can see here, but you'll see it on the map here in just a second. So, it's a pretty busy area, as you can see here, we have Colony Tire that's surrounded. Let me see if I can get my map, or it might just be easier if I, uh, do this. Sorry. There we go. So, you can see it's a pretty busy intersection, we have pest control, various types of commercial developments that surround it. Um, it does back up to a single-family neighborhood that's back in here, uh, but for the most part, it is, for all intents and purposes, staff use it as pretty much a, a majority commercial node and hub for the area. So the zoning out here, as you can see, this is the C P that's here, it's my understanding that this is the applicant's current operation here. The, uh, intent is to move and, uh, this back into this area back in here. You're probably saying, where are the other two zoning districts that are here? We have R six here, but I did mention C three and C, uh, P, I believe. That's in that little stem that is so small, you can't even see it, but there are districts within that stem that we're gonna be cleaning up if this were to move forward. So, uh, there is water and sewer out to this particular location. When we looked at the Southwest Cumberland Plan, it does call for heavy commercial out in this area, so we felt that the request is plan compliant. Uh, the intent is to concentrate a lot of the commercial development and nodes at the intersections, and, uh, that we generally try to protect all of the residential areas that back up to it. So we do have some conditions that are a part of this, since it is a conditional request. So the site plan's pretty basic, uh, you can see, here's the site in question. Uh, staff had worked with the applicant or the agent in order to be able to restrict, so we have a condition that there would be no truck traffic coming from this area back onto Charles Street. And I'll show you why that is in just a minute. If you've ever been out there, the streets are dirt, or they're not very, uh, up to par. So we put a condition on here that there would be no traffic that would dump out into the neighborhood. They're also gonna be required to put up a screening and a buffer on that back part to screen off of the neighborhood as well, too. So that's being included. So, yeah. Uh, this is the subject property, as we're standing on Charles Street in the back, looking into it. This is actually standing on the property, looking Charles, you can see that we have a, a mix of light, uh, I'd say smaller type paved roads and dirt roads that are here, but this is looking up the street here from that intersection in the area that you can see where the arrow is pointing, that's the area that you should be facing. So, this is another view of the north, but you can see dirt roads out here, and a lot of the roads are really kind of, uh, not really up to par. So, moving forward, this is the east view, again, dirt streets. You can see the sign that we put out here to conform with state statute advertising requirements. So staff had recommended approval of the request with the conditions that we put in, that I just spoke to you, it went to the planning board, and they had recommended approval by a non-to-zero vote.
Can we open up the public comment? Public hearing, I'm sorry. Are there any speakers?
We have one speaker.
Okay.
Mr. Ronald Hammond.
Is this-
He's speaking for.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ronald Hammond, uh, look, wanting to purchase this apartment, and I agree with everything the planning board has conditioned. And it's fine, I mean, there'd be no dumping of J B's trucks coming in, in and out, there'd be no, no can work.
Okay. Thank you, are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor? I'm sorry, Commissioner Keith?
I was gonna make a motion, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Keith?
If you have somebody else, if you'd like.
Uh, in the case of zoning two-two dash zero zero seven four, I move to approve the rezoning request from R six Residential District, C three Heavy Commercial District and C P Plan Commercial Districts, the C P Plan Commercial District Conditional Zoning. The board finds the request is inconsistent with the Southwest Cumberland County Land Use Plan, which calls for heavy commercial at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, as it is compatible with, to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to items of business, Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you. Um, the first item of business is granting a franchise agreement for the deli at the courthouse and D S S. This is the second reading. Um, at the agenda's meeting held on November tenth, Assistant County Manager Tracy Jackson presented this item. In summary, the existing franchise agreement expires December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. The county advertised for proposals to operate and provide, uh, deli snack bar services for three years. Um, the Lees, who, uh, have operated the courthouse site since two thousand and three, and the D S S site since two thousand and eight, were the only responders. Um, at the November tenth meeting, the Board of Commissioners, uh, approved moving the franchise agreement to the November twenty-first meeting. Uh, the franchise was approved. Granting a franchise requires that the board also approve, um, a second reading, and today, the item is being presented for, uh, the second reading. Uh, the franchise was approved. Granting a franchise requires that the board also approve, um, a second reading, and today the item is being presented for, uh, the second reading.
Are there any questions?
I'll make a vote.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner, Council.
It's the second of two required readings, approving a grant of a franchise to the Lees to go enjoy a restaurant for a term of three years. They do have beautiful French fries.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion. Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My problem is not with the, with the, my problem with, is with the process, and I've talked about this process since two thousand and three. We can say time and time again, nobody else bid on this, and that is a problem with the way we advertise this. There are many, many restaurateurs in this committee, and this one person since two thousand and three going on their twentieth year, and nobody's doing it. It is because we are not making it the contract available for others to look at it. So I wish him the best of luck. I don't believe our process is adequate to get the best and most competitive bid at, at the courthouse and D S S. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams.
Commissioner Keith, this is all of what I'd say.
I got Greek heritage. They know restaurants, ma'am.
No, no, no. Um, I do believe, I, I do believe that the world is changing and that the way, there's a statutory way to do this. Um, and if you do the minimum what the statute says, that's why sometimes we get in what we want to do, not beating up on them. We may want to look at the process and do a little bit more than that, and so, you know, you may want to ask staff and their attorney to look at and bring something back to this board as to have we advertised, because otherwise, we get you every, every, every day, and I have to hear that the same thing over and over again.
Yes, sir.
Not that I'm tired of hearing it.
They're acknowledging that.
But I am tired of hearing it. But if we could do that, Madam Chair, is that, uh, staff at least, and, and not necessarily at the next meeting, but at least, uh, review that. I got my P I O, I got my manager, we got our, um, attorney. Between those three brilliant people, we can come up with something, even when we doing our RFPs and everything else.
Okay.
Is that kind of agreeable?
I think there was a motion in a second. Was there a second on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, it's been motion and properly second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Voting in favor, I have. Please, okay. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Council, Chairwoman Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Booth. Voting in opposition, I have Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four C, consideration of ordinance to prohibit camping on county property. Madam Manager.
Um, Madam Chairwoman, it is my fault. Um, we skipped over item four A, which is amendment to, uh, the contract to audit accounts.
Okay, so we skipped over, okay, so we're gonna go back to item four A.
Oh, they're different on the computer. They're for B on our, okay.
Hello, Ms. Evans, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so when I did the presentation on December eighth about the amendment to audit contract accounts, we were anticipating that the audit would be done by today, and it is not. Cherry Becker continues to have staffing problems. Um, most recently, they had a new staff completing the single audit review, and that, um, review had to be redone by a more seasoned staff. And so we have a new proposed timeline. Um, we're anticipating that the financial audit portion will be complete by January third. The, um, financial funds presentation will be presented by me at the meeting on January tenth. The compliance audit will be completed on January tenth, the financial audit component only. Um, the compliance audit will be completed on January eleventh. We'll then compile the, the annual comprehensive financial report and have it ready by the January seventeenth meeting, where the auditors will present the compliance report, and then on, we're proposing that January eighteenth will be the new deadline to put into the amended contract for the, for the audit to be complete and submitted to the local government commission.
We don't have to vote on that, do we?
It's a contract. It's, so it's a, it's a contract amendment, so yes, sir.
Commissioner Adams.
Why would you skip the agenda setting conference?
There's, so there's a, there's a meeting scheduled for January tenth. And so that's where I would do the fund financial statement, where we, where I go over a summary view of, um, specific funds and the fund balances.
Oh, that's the agenda session is on the table?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it moved in January. Okay, it's on that Tuesday. I got it.
Instead, yes.
That's why you didn't tell me. I was wrong.
Okay.
I was wrong.
And I, and, and, and I hate to say it, but I don't have a hundred percent certainty that the audit will be completed within this timeline, and so if it doesn't, then I'll provide an update at that agenda session meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, so.
I would approve the amendment, uh, make a motion, approve the amendment to the contract, the audit, uh, counts for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two by extending the submission date to January the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to item four C, consideration of the ordinance to prohibit camping on county property. Madam Manager.
Uh, the county attorney will present this item.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thi- this is actually an amendment to an existing ordinance and a new ordinance. These were presented at the, uh, November twenty-first meeting, and they are coming back for a second reading because they were not, uh, approved by all the commissioners, uh, on that date. Uh, they are the same, uh, proposed ordinances that were presented then. The, uh, first new ordinance, which prohibits camping on, on county property. Uh, camping i- is, is broadly, uh, defined to, to basically mean, uh, lying down, sleep, uh, bedding, or putting anything in place to, to sleep or spend the night on the county property, storing personal belongings, tents, huts, tarps, parking a motor vehicle, motor home trailer. Uh, the board wa- is by this ordinance declaring camping on public property a public nuisance. In the memo background of this, this has come about because of the accumulation of human waste on the library premises that it's, it has become an issue for the staff, uh, janitorial staff at the, uh, library in terms of dealing with it. And, uh, i- it's a serious issue. Um, this prohibits camping on camp, on, on county property, and the enforcement and, and the county manager Cannon had, had talked with, with Sheriff Wright in depth about enforcing this. And this, this, the allegations that this is a criminal ordinance or imposing a foul or die penalty is not correct. The sheriff has the authority to enforce this ordinance by giving anyone camping on county property, uh, notice of trespass and given appropriate amount of time for the circumstances to clear their belongings or possessions from the, move the campsite from the property. If the, uh, and then the, the sheriff will let the county manager know, and the county manager will send county staff, not sheriff's office folks, uh, to dispose of the property, uh, seize and dispose of the property in accordance with county policy. We, the ordinance doesn't say that the sheriff will keep a sworn law enforcement officer on site at such times as county staff are seizing property for the, uh, to promote the safety of, of everyone. That's the first ordinance. The second ordinance is just an amendment to the existing ordinance regulating, uh, parking on county property. It makes it unlawful to willfully park any vehicle in any county-owned parking lot which does not display a current license plate. Uh, that, that is, that is not in the current ordinance, and that is just an addition to those two ordinances. My recommendation is that the board adopt, uh, the new ordinance prohibiting camping and the amendment, uh, to our chap- chapter nine, article two, parking on county-owned property of the, um, the Cumberland, um, of the Cumberland County Code as stated.
A question, I have a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that they would be given time before they have to remove their items. How much time is that?
It, it, the ordinance just says appropriate to the circumstances. I mean, if they've got just what they can carry at one time, it'd probably be a fairly short time, but if they have a tent or structure or something there, I mean, uh, we, we are not setting a, a, a time to, that, that, that's, it, it's gonna be in the discretion of the law enforcement officer who's evaluating the circumstances.
So at, at the law enforcer's discretion, and so if he just thinks that it should only take them fifteen minutes, then that's fifteen minutes. If he thinks it should take them ten days, it's ten days. Is that what, is, is that what you're saying?
Yes, literally, yes.
Okay, and so we talk a lot about, we've been hearing a lot about everything that's been happening on Maiden Lane. We know that that's not the only place where they have homeless people at. What about those other locations? Are they gonna be enforcing, giving trespasses?
This, this ordinance would apply to all county-owned property located anywhere in the county. As, I, I suspect as, as, as most of our ordinance are done, enforcement will be complaint-driven. I, I don't think anyone's going out looking for, for places to, uh, to, to do this, but it, it will be complaint-driven.
And so the city issues five hundred dollar tickets. We will issue a trespassing.
A, a notice of trespassing.
A notice of trespassing.
That is not a, a, a criminal offense that you have to be notified of trespass before you can
Correct. They have to be notified, and then the second offense, they will be.
If the person remains on the, on the premises and, and not complying with the directive of the sheriff, then they could, could be charged with trespassing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
I guess Commissioner Keith has, uh, maybe, uh,
A comment.
a comment, because I was just gonna make a motion, um, to, to the amendment on the regulating, regulating, on the ordinance regulating parking on county property.
I, I'll wait till the motion, Mr., uh, Madam Chair.
That's my, that's my motion.
So you're only addressing the camping on?
On, on the, uh, parking.
Only parking.
It's two, it's two separate ordinances. Uh, so I'm dealing with the amendment to the ordinance regulating parking on county property.
Second.
Okay.
If I may, ma'am, I can ask a question. It'll work with both of them. Businesses in town that have, um, uh, trespassing, um, issue are required to put up signage. Will the county be putting up signage in all these areas about trespassing? And for, not only that, and if the parking lots and, and that sort of thing.
Signage is one form of notice. This is, giving people notices is also notice, is, is.
Right, but my, my point is, what are we trying to do here? Um, are we, are we, it could very come, it could come out as someone not knowing or someone not caring, and if they know that this is an area that would be considered trespassing, they may not be there. So, uh, I, I, I would feel like the respectable thing to do would at least, at least be to let people know that this is an area. I have to do it out of commercial business.
Because that's your private business. These are public buildings that they can go into, so you can't put up a no trespass.
To your point, to your point. I stand corrected. I was wrong.
One of us in one night.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adams had, had a reasonable.
Okay, so there are two motions before. It's the first. Okay, there's just one motion. Okay. There's been a motion, and it's been properly second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones and Chairwoman Stewart.
I, um, the motion passes, and I'll move on?
No, you still got, uh, the second one.
I thought it was only one mo- okay.
I just made the motion just on parking.
I thought y'all said it was both, okay.
No, it was just on parking and not having your tags and all of that.
Okay, I thought you said both. Okay, so the next, um, motion prohibiting camping on county property. Is there a motion? We're doing a motion to prohibit camping. The first one was for.
Approve the second reading.
Yes, the, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners ordinance prohibiting camping on county property.
I move we, uh, approve it for second reading, the ordinance to prohibit camping on county property.
Is there a second? It's been motioned and properly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones and Chairwoman Stewart.
Thank you. We move on, Madam Manager, to consideration of approval of standing committees of the Board of Commissioners.
I've got a short presentation. A short presentation. Thank you. So, um, the item before you is to establish committees of the Board of Commissioners. Um, these are the committees that have been previously established, uh, by action of the board or by action of the chair. You have a description of those committees in your packet, so I will not, um, belabor that description. Um, the, in addition, uh, our chairwoman is prom- proposing, uh, two additional committees. One to, um, handle the General Government Services Committee to oversee the planning and construction of the general services, uh, campus, and a committee to address homelessness, which would oversee the planning and construction of the homeless shelter, and then also provide guidance on policies related to homelessness. Uh, the recommended guidelines are basically, um, just putting in uh, word form what the practice has been in the past, uh, which is that the committees, each of the committees can, consist of three board members appointed by the, uh, chairperson each January. Um, those committees can bring in additional people if they deem that beneficial. Uh, one of the committee members will be designated as the committee chair by the Board of Commissioners' chairperson. Um, unless the meeting schedule is, um, established by the committee, uh, the committees will meet as needed, and they should make, um, periodic updates to the full board, um, and recommendations. So the recommended motion is to affirm previously established committees, approve the established, establishment of the proposed new committees, and establish the guidelines, um, outlined above.
Commissioner Adams?
Uh, great presentation. I would say, and I think, uh, Commissioner Keith served on that committee with me, Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Council. Nine-one-one is finished. I mean, the building's open, and I think we got the, uh, the P I O did the whole thing, so I don't know that we need a nine-one-one committee anymore. It was for the construction of that building before, uh, Ms. Pascal got here, uh, county manager got here. So I would move to, uh, the recommendation to affirm these short of the nine-one-one committee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I will call on the Vice Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, these are nominations to, uh, the first one is to, um, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, um, and the following, uh, nominations for the following categories. Amen Navay House for the category of United Way Nonprofit, Gregory Davis for the category of the Member of Faith Community, Stephanie Dixon for the category of substance abuse representative, Clarissa Reese, Renee, Renard Earl, and Dwight Palmer in the category of at-large representative. Uh, the Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council recommends the following for design, designate positions. Heather Skeens in the category of county manager designate, uh, Judge, uh, Chair Salamak in the category District Court Judge, uh, designate, Sergeant, uh, Melanie Farham in the category of Cumberland County Sheriff's Office designate, and Lieutenant Mike McCaugh, um, McCaughie in the category of, uh, Family Police Department designate, and Caitlin Lacy in the category of District Attorney designate. All of those were, uh, uh, the J C P C contacted all of those, and they were willing to serve. Uh, that would be the nominations for that. That takes us to the Cumberland County Board of Health. Uh, there are two vacancies. Um, uh, let me do it this way first. Uh, the Cumberland County Board of Health has their recommendations. Um, Dr. Akeem. Dr. Akeem Asadi, I think, is eligible for reappointment, so I'll make that nomination. However, Dr. Sam Fleishman is not eligible for reappointment because he served two terms, so this board would have to vote to allow him to do another term on the Board of Health before we make that motion to nominate, because there's no reason to nominate if we don't do that, so.
Does he want to do it again?
Yes, he wants to do it again. They want him. Commissioner Council's on that board, said he does excellent job. It's a connection between Cape Fear Valley and the Health Department who needs to work together. So I would make a motion that we allow, allow the nomination of Dr. Sam Fleishman to go forth for another term on the Board of Health.
Second.
Is there, oh, it's been motion and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Then I would do a nomination of Dr. Sam Fleishman in the category of physician and we'll come back and make those appointments at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all the nominations.
Okay, now we will go into closed session. If I can get a motion to go into closed session?
I'd make a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3, real property acquisition pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A5 and a personnel matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318-411A6.
I second. It's been motion and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We're now going to closed session.
Come out of closed session.
Is it? Okay, it's been motion, motion and second, all in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and properly second a few times. All in favor?
Unanimous.